I'd like to call the, uh, to order the special meeting of the Board of Regents today on, uh, June 18th, so I will gavel us in and note that you only see 11 of us. Our colleague, uh, Regent Lucas is attempting to call in from, uh, from Europe where she is, and as we have advanced our ongoing review of our bylaws and our policies, we've uncovered one element of our bylaws that, uh, that we need to ultimately either amend or begin to comply with, and that is just a simple technic- technicality that when we have a regent who is not present but is participating electronically or by phone, by phone is how the bylaws anticipate it, but someday we may have electronic participation too, we're supposed to ask the board to confirm that that makes sense. Now, we haven't ever done that. I don't think there's any objections before I ask though to, I'd like to ask the board to at least give me a quick show of hands if we all support Regent Lucas participating in this case. Looks like everybody's in favor of that. So, Regent Lucas, when you join us, you have been pre-approved to support and participate in this conversation, so...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Regent Swigem.
Can I make an important clarification?
Yes.
Regent Lucas is not in Europe. She is in the homeland.
Of Norway. In the homeland.
Norway.
As a someone who is half Norwegian, a quarter Danish, and a quarter Scotch-Irish, I concur with that homeland designation. So, if she calls in from the homeland, we will welcome her with, uh, with spirits. I'd like, uh, so at this point, our one item of business is the letter of intent between the University of Minnesota, University of Minnesota Physicians and Fairview Health Services. A momentous day ahead of us. We have several presenters joining us, but before we call them to the table, I'd like to turn to President Kahler, and he can bring us in here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's wonderful to be here this morning with so many members of the Scandinavian diaspora who have managed to make their way west. Today truly is an important moment for our university, for health sciences, for clinical health care, and for Minnesota. As you know, over the past seven years of my presidency, this renewed and re-envisioned partnership with Fairview has been a priority of yours and mine. We have worked tirelessly on this issue, and frankly, we've had some disappointments on the way. The first positive step was the formation of M Health more than five years ago, partnership with Fairview Health Services pioneered then by CEO Chuck Moody. That relationship, while imperfect, set our basis for today, where I am pleased to seek your approval for the resolution before you related to an M Health/Fairview non-binding letter of intent. While we must be clear that we still have lots of hard work to do to turn this into a definitive agreement, this LOI is truly a great step forward. It signals a new and better course with our long-term partners at Fairview. This preserves and grows the academic presence in our care delivery system. It ensures academic physician leadership. And a $111 million investment in the University of Minnesota Medical Center means the sort of facility we want and need for our patients and our faculty. We have an exceptional history of innovation in the health sciences, but history is about yesterday, and this LOI moves us forward to tomorrow. This LOI provides us with great momentum, but we would not be here today without the leadership and thoughtfulness of Dean Jacob Tolar, of Senior Vice President Brian Burnett, and of General Counsel Doug Peterson, and I'm very thankful to them, along with key members of their staff, including someone who has been there since the very beginning, first on my staff and now on Jacob's, and that's Emily Lawrence. You also don't get here unless you have partners who understand that cooperation and collaboration make for a strong marriage, and that mutual interest will drive us forward. Were it not for Fairview's CEO James Herrford, we wouldn't be here today, and I'm delighted to see James in the audience today. Thank you. And of course, we would not be here without the patience of this board, and I thank you for that. With that, Mr. Chair, I seek your approval for this resolution, and I'm pleased to introduce General Counsel Peterson, Senior Vice President Burnett, Dr. Mac Baird of UMP, and Dr. Brad Benson of the UMP Board to present to you. Gentlemen.
Thank you, President Kahler. Let's have all the presenters come up, and while they're getting set up, Mr. Herrford, I want to express my own personal and the board's thanks to you for the commitment you brought to your organization and the commitment your organization and this board's brought to finding our way to today. Does our General Counsel's name at the top of the list suggest he's starting?
Yes, Chairman McMillan.
All right, very good. General Counsel Peterson.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair McMillan, thank you, members of the board, President Kahler. It indeed takes four of us to stand in the stead of Dean Jacob Tolar. I'll have more on that later. We're here to speak to the resolution authorizing the university's entry into a non-binding, I emphasize "non-binding," letter of intent between the University of Minnesota, University of Minnesota Physicians, and Fairview Health Services. The larger challenge that brings us together is beyond the contours of the particular legal document that you have before you this morning. What everybody has been wrestling with is that the future of health care in Minnesota is playing out against a backdrop of an ever-changing regulatory environment, a demanding health care marketplace, and a need for top-notch academic medicine, which means teaching, training, and research. What underpins what President Kahler described as the refreshed and re-envisioned partnership is a commitment to quality care, patient safety, and hospital and clinic efficiency. The vision behind the letter of intent is that those three priorities are not conflicting, but rather mutually reinforcing. Adoption of this non-binding LOI is just the first of three key dates or phases in the development of a patient-centered vision for academic medicine. As President Kahler noted, we have a lot of hard work ahead, and I will comment a little bit more on that later as well. Before I turn it over to Dr. Benson, I will offer three observations. First, we would not be here today but for the Constitution and resolve of the Board of Regents in May of 2017, where you put down a challenge. And that was a challenge not just to Fairview, but that was a challenge to the university's administration and to UMP. Second, this LOI is indeed the product of a vision and leadership of Dean Jacob Tolar and James Herrford, Fairview's CEO, but also designing this, this structure with them were a lot of other people, and I should make note of them this morning. There's the medical dean-chief of staff, Emily Lawrence, there's Brian Burnett's financial team, there's AHC Counsel Susan Kratz, UMP Counsel Jennifer Bishop, but most importantly, there have been an armada, and I use the term "armada," of faculty physicians who have been involved in this, in this conversation. I will tell you, it has been a personal privilege for me to be a very small part of a much larger conversation involving the faculty physicians that make up the university and UMP. I can tell you, we're here to talk about M Health, but maybe more broadly, Minnesota's health is in good hands with the physicians who have been part of the LOI dialogue and the discussion over this framework as it's developed. Third observation, the university's two other partners have spoken very clearly. On Tuesday, June 12th, the Board of Directors of the University of Minnesota Physicians unanimously approved this non-binding LOI. On Thursday, June 14th, the Board of Directors of Fairview Health Services unanimously approved this non-binding LOI. With that, I turn it over to Dr. Benson.
Thank you, General Counsel Peterson, Chair McMillan, members of the board, President Kahler. So, my name is Brad Benson. I'm a professor in the Departments of Medicine and Pediatrics. I serve as Secretary of the Board of Directors for UMP, and I am director, I have the privilege of being the Director of the Division of General Internal Medicine here at the university, and I'm here to represent Dean Jacob Tolar and the medical school. And as General Counsel, Counselor Peterson noted, the board on Tuesday unanimously approved the letter of intent. That is not because it's perfect. I think we recognize that, but I think we recognize this is clearly a critical and necessary step in redefining our partnership so that together we can deliver on this shared vision. If we could advance that slide. So, this, this is the vision that moves us. So, our faculty understand that to do this, we need a partner that really values what we bring to the table and really is willing to roll up their sleeves with us to co-create this future. I think, you know, our faculty feel the LOI is a very good start, and we're optimistic knowing that the work is just beginning. So, the division, the general internal medicine division that I serve is kind of a microcosm of the medical school. I've got over 55 faculty. We deliver primary care across multiple settings, inpatient hospital care at all hours for sick and complex patients. We partner with our, on teams with our surgical and subspecialty colleagues. My faculty teach and run and lead education programs and contribute to new knowledge with research. So, it's an independent lot, pretty opinionated. There aren't a whole lot of things where we're all completely agree on. There are a couple of things we absolutely agree on. One is our true north, and that is, you know, our understanding of our, you know, mission as faculty for the land-grant institution in Minnesota and our mission to drive a healthier future for this state. And we agree on the power of this vision in really enabling us to deliver. So, this vision is audacious when you look at this, but I think it gives us common cause to dare greatly together, and that is exciting. So, when I look at the individual components, so a top-desile medical school in the NIH rankings, that's a rise from 33 to 14. You know, in, in last year's dollars, that's $143 million going to $305 million in recurring funding. That is going to take, you know, real investment in research infrastructure, key discovery team hires, service pricing that makes us competitive for the large trials and awards that move the dial. So, a nationally-ranked academic medical center and U.S. News &amp; World Report with recognition in 10 specialties. That is going to require academic physician leadership embedded throughout the system to drive innovation and value, and really having that coupled with efficient and effective management that'll get us there. And I love to really scale that and really have that across the system. And then as a premier destination for complex care in the metro, you know, for many of our quadrenary care programs such as transplant, we really need millions of patients to grow those programs, so we really do need to continue to partner with all the systems as we've done to meet our education and research missions. So, a thriving and an independent UMP practice will be necessary, and I think that is also cleared out, spelled out very clearly in the LOI. And in terms of training and recruitment and retention of top talent, if we deliver on all those things above, we will be a magnet for our best and brightest, and frankly, for everyone else's best and brightest, which is our audacious goal. So, it's really the game-changing potential of the partnership that fuels the optimism, and I'm reminded of the story that James Herrford tells when he talks about why he came here to Minnesota. He said that when he was looking over things, he saw all the parts to a Ferrari laying there in the garage, and, you know, the excitement and the challenge of putting those all together and really getting it out on the road is one of the things that brought him here. Now, you know, I know nothing about sports cars and have finally made peace with the fact that I really kind of like my minivan, so I'm going to tweak this analogy a bit. You know, I feel like we have the collective talent across our two organizations to build a zero-emission, you know, driverless, high-speed transport system that will deliver access across the state and beyond to the best that academic medicine has to offer. And, you know, when I think of what that means as a clinician, you know, for Emmy Reeves, you, you may have read about in the paper recently, she's from South Carolina, that was access to a whole pancreas transplant. She's the youngest patient to have gotten one in the last 25 years, cured her diabetes and her debilitating insulin injection allergy. For my, I take care of childhood cancer survivors. That's the next demographic imperative because of our good pediatric care. One in 640 adults aged 20 to 39 is a childhood cancer survivor. For, for them, it's access to expert teams that are going to monitor and mitigate all the late effects of that treatment so that they can keep moving forward, and we don't miss opportunities to prevent trouble. You know, I think it's access to innovative care delivery in hopes of new treatments and cures from clinical trials, and I think it's access to a stellar, caring doctor that was trained here and now lives in practices in the community, like 70% of the primary care doctors in this state have been. So, I think we recognize this letter of intent is the first step. We've agreed on the shared goals that deliver each of, what each of us needs, and I think from a faculty standpoint, we have leaders that we deeply trust and respect in Dean Jacob Tolar and in our CEO, Mac Baird, and we're ready to roll up our sleeves and move on to the next steps. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Benson. Dr. Baird?
Well, good morning.
Morning.
And President McMillan, and President Kahler, and Chair McMillan, and Regents, I'm very pleased to be here representing UMP Physicians. Since October, I've been the CEO of this organization and co-president of M Health. For 15 years prior to that, I was the chair of Family Medicine and Community Health here, which you've supported many times over those years. I'm pleased to say that we're at this point in our history, as you've just heard, because of hard work on everyone's part, and we have a true partner now with Fairview, and their whole organization is working toward making this a successful enterprise jointly driven with academic leadership. The role of the CEO will be prominent and at the peak of the pyramid, along with the dean, in making critical decisions going forward. We have partnerships going horizontally across the service lines that Fairview has set up and are seeking, and we're going to provide academic leaders for all those service lines to make sure we connect with our community partners and drive the standards of care as our academic colleagues would do. Again, it emphasizes the academic leadership we've always sought, and also tremendous academic financial support for our combined missions that you've just heard about. So, I'm one of those that's had several degrees from Minnesota, two master's degrees, an MD degree, and a residency, so I'm a quadruple gopher. And many people here come because of their tight connection to the whole university, and others in the community because of their connection to Fairview. Together, we can make an enterprise that will succeed in this very competitive marketplace and lead the way to a more prominent role for the University of Minnesota Physicians and Fairview together to have a combined enterprise that reaches across the state. We will continue our work that you stimulated last year with a very interesting letter to us, and as CEO, I take that very seriously. So, we are becoming a fully-integrated, interdependent, highly-successful group practice. That means we're leaving behind our attitudes about focus on departments as successful as they were and have been, and reach above that to think about a group practice that is interdependent and mutually supportive of everyone. And now we're reaching in that same manner toward Fairview as a partner. And as others have heard me say in the past, I have one rule for partnership: I don't knowingly undermine a partner, but I make mistakes. And if we're trusting each other and that mistake shows up some months later, and my partner would call up and say, "Mac, you made a mistake. Let's fix this thing," and I'd say, "James, that's a good thing to know. I'm sorry that happened. Let's go fix it." And together we move forward. It's taken all this time to develop that level of trust, and now we're moving forward as partners, and I'm proud to be part of that and look forward to the success of this combined enterprise. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Baird. Appreciate those remarks about the value of trusting partnerships. The Senior Vice President Burnett?
Thank you, Chair McMillan, members of the board. I'll briefly go through things that are in front of you, but the, as a member of the negotiating team since last summer, I can say that this has made, we've made tremendous progress over the last year since we embarked on this journey with Fairview and their new leadership. Most notably, our faculty and physician leaders were very concerned about modernizing the operating rooms in the University of Minnesota Medical Center on the East Bank campus, and that commitment has been made by the administration for $111 million in capital improvements by Fairview, and within this agreement, the agreement that, and we'll flesh this out more as we move to the definitive agreement, but committing to invest continuously, not just this tranche of $111 million of needed capital to keep our academic medical center in top-performing shape. We are working, and one of the biggest works we're going to have in this second bullet is a simplified master contract. At one point, we don't know the exact number, but there's around 1,400-plus separate contracts between Fairview and UMP and the School of Medicine. The goal of this effort in this next phase would be to get to one contract and really simplify our relationship. And then significant incremental academic support, as, as members of the board know, the ability for us to be more competitive with the top-desile medical schools around the country will be contributions from our health system towards the research enterprise. And to that, the Fairview Health System has put forth a significant increase in what has heretofore been a small contribution to the research enterprise, and it begins with three parts. In the, in the letter of intent, it talks about a fixed and two variable parts. The fix begins at $35 million and increases $5 million a year to $50 million, and thereby, and after that, it increases by CPI. There's two variables based on, one, the net patient service revenue brought into the Fairview system that our, our faculty touch, and then the second one is one on, based on net operating income, thereby creating incentives for our physicians and the School of Medicine to help improve the margins of Fairview in aligning, in alignment of interests. This has been something we've worked very hard to structure into this letter of intent. We obviously have more work to do to pull that together, and combined, all three of these parts should bring between $50 and $95 million by 2023. That's that delta that Dr. Benson talked about of the amount of income we need to hire researchers to move into the top-desile and move back to where the University of Minnesota Medical Center used to be ranked. And the other thing I guess I would say is the branding piece, even though we don't call it out here on this slide, the branding piece, we have more work to do for this M Health brand, M Health/Fairview brand. But the notion that we've put forth through the negotiating team with Dr. Tolar and Mac and myself is that if it's not led by academic physicians within the Fairview system, we don't want the M Health brand put with that. It needs to represent the quality and the, and the oversight of the faculty leadership here at the University of Minnesota. So, that's going to be something we're going to continue to put, to flesh out in the, in the definitive agreement, and as I said before, we have a lot of work to do between now and September 1st on those things and, and putting just a little more precision around these numbers, but these are substantial changes from the relationship, quite frankly, on a financial basis that Fairview's had with the university over the first 20 years of the, of the partnership. And with that, I'll turn the remainder over to General Counsel Peterson to talk about next steps. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair McMillan. As for the work we have to do, which is substantial, I mentioned that today is the first of three key dates. So, today, hopefully, the board approves the non-binding LOI. Dean Tolar has described that as building on a five-part skeleton, a framework of UMP independence, financial support, branding that squares with organizational change, academic leadership, and in some ways, most importantly, a term or length of agreement that nests within the current affiliation agreement. Second step, by September 30, 2018, we turn the non-binding LOI into definitive agreements. We have a lot of work to do there. Working groups are being formed as we speak, but there's some questions that need to be fleshed out along the lines of what exactly does it mean for UMP to be independent? We're talking about service lines driving quality. How will that be implemented? We're talking about having an organization centered on an academic mission. How are our faculty physicians going to be embedded within the Fairview system? So, questions like that need to be answered in a definitive fashion. The timeline is that the non-renewal deadline that you had set, you know, beginning in May of 2017 is now, would be extended to September 30. By September 1st, the parties are targeting that we will have negotiated the terms of new definitive agreements, and then in the time period of September 1st through September 30, there would be board review and approvals by the three boards, University, UMP, and Fairview. The third and perhaps most important date or step rotates around the date of 2023. That is the five-year point in the next definitive agreement, the same five-year point that we have in the current affiliation agreement, and from my point of view, that's the, the time period within which the parties need to move from legal documents to a culture of alignment with our academic and our clinical practices aligned. So, that date, 2023, from our point of view, is going to bring some healthy discipline to all three parties. Through all of this, there've been, you know, a fair question asked of how is it that these organizations have made the type of progress that's described in this LOI? Certainly, it's to the credit of the leadership of Fairview, especially James Herrford, as, you know, people have mentioned. From the university and UMP side of the house, there've been many contributors, as I mentioned earlier, but I will give you three key explanations to end our remarks this morning. Number one, the dean of the medical school, Jacob Tolar. Number two, the interim vice president of the Health Sciences, Jacob Tolar. And number three, the chair of the Board of Directors of UMP, Jacob Tolar. So, I wish he could be here this morning. Much of this is to his credit, and with that, we open it up for your questions or comments.
Thank you, General Counsel Peterson, and each of you who framed that up, I think, quite nicely for the board to now move into a deliberation phase, and before I open it up for questions, I want to, I picked up on, on Dr. Baird's comments about the value and importance of partnerships and the trust that underlies those, but I, I wanted to also pick up on something Dr. Benson said, which was, "This isn't perfect, but it's excellent, and it's audacious." And I think, in my experience, people who strive for perfection end up with the psychiatric colleagues of yours. People who strive for excellence can sometimes get it, and, and I think we have here. So, perfection is, has never been a goal of mine. Excellence always is, and I think that's a great way to frame this up. So, I don't have any opening remarks or other questions, but would turn to my colleagues now and bring the resolution before us. Regent Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I guess I could say gentlemen, but there's other gentlemen and ladies too who have worked on this. Thank you very much for your efforts, not just months but years, bringing us to this day. In any kind- In any kind of proposed agreement, as indicated, it's not perfect. What I will call the public soft spots and the private soft spots. And let me address it this way. What are those who are involved in the health cares in the U.S. and in Minnesota saying about this effort, this, this deal? Now, I know there's the private negotiations and things that need fixing that are not going to be discussed, but publicly, what would the Sanford systems and what would those systems be saying today, and they're probably watching, what about this potential agreement?
Not sure who wants to field that. Dr. Baird?
I will try, Regent Johnson. The colleagues with whom I speak say that, well, it's about time. Haven't you been here before? Secondly, they would state, together, you probably could be a worthy competitor if I were Sanford or others. And third, are you really going to remain an asset to the whole state of Minnesota? That's a key question for us. We must be both partners and able to secure relationships with almost anyone in the state. And we will, in order to fulfill our mission of a land-grant university, remain able to have those contracts. And in our negotiations, it became much more successful this winter, that became clear that we have a both-and situation. We will be a primary partner for Fairview and its system. We will also, as will they, have outside partnerships and relationships on smaller enterprises that we would go forward with in order to be effective in our state mission of education, research, and practice to those who need us.
Hello, Regent Johnson.
Thank you, and for your last comments, much appreciated. We all are 12, 11 present regents and we're regents for the entire state. Having said that, we come from different jurisdictions. And we who live in the rural areas are always concerned that, quote, you get a fair deal and get a fair shake. And I, I'm hopeful and confident moving forward that this initiative will be good for all the state and that the phone call or communication doesn't come that something like this, well, the University of Minnesota, its academic health is moving forward, but we're left out. We're left out of the picture. It could be in Alexandria, Minnesota. It could be in Fergus Falls. It could be in Wilmer, wherever. But I hope it's a statewide effort, which I believe it is, but going forward, that continues. So thank you.
Thank you, Regent Johnson. Before I call on any other members of the board, I do know that, I think Regent Lucas is with us now via phone. Is that correct, Regent Lucas?
Yes, I'm here.
Very good. Welcome. And before you joined, we did get an expression of full support from the board for your participation by telephonically. So thanks for being here. And if you want to make any comments, please jump in.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for our leadership team? Regent Cohen?
Thank you, Chair McMillan. I don't really have a question. I just have a couple of comments. First of all, I want to thank you all and all those that are on your teams for the enormously hard work that you've done on this issue and to Dean Tolar, of course, also. I'm probably, other than Regent Johnson, one of the people who's been on the board the longest and has heard this conversation over the years so many times. So it really is a very, very exciting moment. I've always believed that this is the, our goal, that this is where we want to be. And so I feel really very, very glad that this is where we're arriving. I think the emphases that you're providing on our culture, that it isn't perfect, audacious goals, all seem to really fit. So I just want to commend, commend you for all the hard work and wish us all the best of luck as we move forward. I think it's an exciting moment.
Thank you, Regent Cohen. Regent Powell?
Thank you. Thanks, Chair McMillan. And I also, I just want to continue to add on the comments made by Regent Cohen and just thank all of you who have led this process. I know it's been difficult, but the hard work to close gaps and resolve differences. And maybe most important of all, to understand the point of view of other, you know, the other sides and all of the participants, you know, as you work to, as you've worked to come together with, with this letter of intent. I appreciate the leadership and I think it's going to pay this debt back in many ways. I do have a question, and that has to do with the immediate next steps, the September timing and the, and the January timing. Wish you well. Hope you can hit that date. It seems there's a lot to do. And what are the, what are the consequences, material consequences, if any, if we happen to, happen to need to go a little bit longer? I mean, are there things here that is absolutely imperative for reasons that we don't, may not understand, or is there some flexibility as we go on to the next step?
Yes, Vice President Burnett?
Mr. Chairman, Regent Powell, members of the board, we do not envision asking for an extension anymore. We need this deadline. The other side wants this deadline as well. We have joint strategic planning to do that needs to be ready to kick into gear in January to make this happen. And so work teams are already being formed. There's four work teams already being put together, and they know they've got a long summer ahead of them. But the goal is not around September 1st. The goal is not later than September 1st, so that it can be acted on by both this board and the Fairview board in September, and we're moving. So that is the way we're leading it from the negotiating team, from Dr. Tolar, Dr. Baird, and myself. But teams are already being formed, and they know there's a bunch of work to do. So we, failure's not an option with respect to deadlines.
Thank you.
Very good. I've got three more regents, and then I'm going to ask for a motion so that we bring the resolution before us. But the debate before that is, is good and just fine. Regent Beeson, then Rocha, then Simonsen. Regent Beeson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and presenters. You know, it's not lost on me that the original agreement was described as an affiliation agreement, and that's a legal term, but it really describes how that relationship started as an affiliation, formal, partial. And so what we're talking about now is a real partnership, fully developed partnership. And from my standpoint, this may be the most important vote that we take. Other, my colleagues may decide where to rank this one, but this is really up there in terms of our, our ability and willingness to affect change in the medical care. There are other opportunities out there. We know about those that relate to delivery and to other, other aspects. This, this has been worked on for the last eight years. I know the first year or two, President Kayle was able to negotiate an additional amount of wanting to the medical school, small, but moving forward. And then we had the M-Health agreement five years ago. I think all that was foundational to where we are today. And I want to applaud everybody for, for the work that brought this letter of intent here today. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Regent Beeson. I certainly concur with your ranking of importance and consequence here. Regent Rocha?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Presenters, this is, this is a momentous conversation, as Regent Beeson just identified. And I, and I appreciate that the members of the board have been working on this now, I believe, for your entire tenure, whatever that tenure might be. I tend to look at this whole conversation as part of a, a much longer evolution. You go all the way to the 80s. I'm sure someone can make an argument before that in terms of the change in healthcare and the marketplace and how the university has, has been able to participate, efforts we made to create our own system that at some point after 95 changed into a relationship with Fairview to include the sale of the, of the hospital. I also want to approach this with the humility to recognize that the evolution will continue. We are not solving this for all time, to the extent that we are solving it. And, and so we need to continue to, to explore those conversations or those, those topics as to how we move forward. I, I have noticed a pretty dramatic change in, in the way this conversation has proceeded over the, the three years of, of this iteration of my service on this board. I would, I would certainly say Dean Tolar has been a catalyst for that change. I also believe Dr. Hereford is, is a pretty substantial difference in, in terms of the way the conversation has, has moved forward and the credibility that he has brought into this conversation with his background, not, not to mention his approach and talent. And so I'm, I'm encouraged by that as well. I also want to be cautious, and I also want to be, you know, appropriately critical in the analysis. And, and I, I start to worry when we talk too much about how we're not seeking perfection. It sounds a little bit like my preparation, preparation for buying my wife an anniversary gift, telling her how perfection is not necessarily the goal. But nonetheless, you know, I think there's truth in that, but I also think that that should not prevent us from being, you know, clear and critical in the way we analyze what we're moving forward with. I, I have concerns. I think I've expressed them in some settings. I'm concerned about the fact that while there are clearly different individuals involved and different, and then there's different leadership on both sides of the ledger, you know, we've, we've fallen short on our expectations coming to this point. And, and certainly, if you're acting as counsel for a client and the client is seeking to renegotiate with a, a party that has not met those obligations in the past, there should be caution. And, and so I look at, at the shortfalls of what we're, what we're expected, and I look at the fact that we're making some investments now in the university's facilities. One could certainly make a cogent argument that those investments are actually being made by funds that would have previously been available to the university through the, the prior agreements. And, and that those investments should have been made, you know, continuously throughout this process for us to, you know, to, to be at that, at that level that we're now stating that we want to be at. So I want to push a little bit. I want to push and make sure that there's an understanding that, that we have an expectation that these terms are going to be met. And if they're not met, there need to be opportunities for the university. I hesitate to use the word consequences, but that is the word rattling around in my head, that if we are not able to meet the terms that we are establishing going forward, that the university has the capacity to, to make decisions about alternatives. I'm absolutely not wanting to see us head down that road, and I, and I am favorably impressed with what's been put forward, that we will not be, you know, compelled to make those decisions. But nonetheless, I want to make sure we don't find ourselves in the position we were before, where we really just didn't have an alternative. I'm very encouraged by the conversation about other alternatives. We are part of a remarkable healthcare environment here in Minnesota with some of the very best of the best. And, and we are fortunate to be partnered with a fantastic community system, but there are others that, that can be of great value. And, and I also think that when you have those relationships, it prevents us from creating a we versus they attitude across the healthcare market. And so I, I want us to be zealous in, in, in that pursuit in a way that complements what is our core relationship with the Fairview system. I will perhaps ask in another setting, I've already taken more than my fair share here, and maybe Dr. Hereford would be the right party to visit with or otherwise, but, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm always interested in the other side's perspective. You know, one could sort of, you know, and again, coming at this from the approach of the university actually setting up its own system, much as Mayo has and others, you know, you ask yourself, well, could we have not created this environment through the university's total control? That way you don't have to worry about competing interests and, and missions. And I understand that there are, you know, clear bases why we wouldn't do that, why we wouldn't necessarily be well-suited to run a system of, of that size. But I'm very interested in, in Fairview, in Fairview's perspective. As a, as a world-class community health system, what are the motivations? What are the advantages? Is it simply a branding issue? I can't believe that that is. And if it is the only reason, I don't think that we're going to be successful in the long term. And so I would love to have that conversation at some point to really understand how the DNA of, of our partner system in this, in this relationship is suited to ensure that not only are we successful, which of course is the, is the, the great motivation of every member of this board, but that Fairview is successful. Because if we're not both famously successful, the system, this, this approach can't, can't succeed in the long, the long term. So, thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the work everyone has done. I understand this is simply an LOI, and I look forward to the, the grist of the, of the specifics as we move into September. Thank you.
Thank you, Regent Rocha. Regent Simonsen?
Thank you, Chair McMillan. I too see this as a very positive step for the university and for Minnesota, and I'm a strong advocate for the team concept, so I really look forward to that. That said, I'm still onboarding, so if this question is not appropriate for this meeting, pass. But from one of the components you talked about, research, and that's a strong interest of mine too. So if you look at our strengths today, the university's strengths today, what would they be and what will they, what are you looking forward tomorrow in this partnership? And again, if that's too complicated, pass. But you mentioned things like cancer, you mentioned things like transplant stuff, but what would you see our strengths today and where are you going?
Dr. Baird? Looks like you're teed up to answer that.
Hi, I'm Chair McMillan and Regent Simonsen. The University of Minnesota has proven in a number of areas of clinical research as well as basic science research. So in oncology, various kinds of cancer care, we're leading the way. I'm a survivor of bone marrow transplant. I had a bone marrow transplant in 2012, and here I sit without any further treatment. We have long survivors of bone marrow transplants, so that's one key area where we excel. Takes about four and a half million people, population base, to have enough frequency of use to have a top-flight bone marrow transplant program. So that's why we need partnerships everywhere, including Fairview. We have cardiovascular research that's going on, especially in pediatric cardiovascular care. We have care and research in orthopedics, so we're a prominent oncology center for orthopedic care, and that's growing and developing with multiple partnerships, including Fairview. We have infectious disease processes going on that help actually connect to oncology and cancer care. So we've developed new pioneering treatments there. And we're one of the few centers now that's available, has available treatment with lymphocytes or white blood cells that can be trained to attack the specific kinds of cancer. So we have especially in oncology and cardiovascular disease and transplants, not to mention, we're a historic center for solid organ transplants. So pancreas, heart, lung transplants, kidney transplants are prominent features that we can provide care for the entire region. And one of our reasons for wanting to continue to grow those prominent areas is that increasingly large insurers, national insurers, are seeking areas that are called centers of excellence. So you have to compete at the national level, not just the local level. And with our continued size and development of a big network that we are now providing together with Fairview and others, we can have enough frequency of use of these sophisticated treatments that people like me, family physicians out in rural areas, know when they call up, they can get state-of-the-art treatment, no matter where they're located. And state funding has helped support that. Your support has helped support that. But we also need a big clinical enterprise to support it. Others may have other things to add.
The only thing I would add is, thank you, Chair McMillan and regents. So when you look at the portfolio across the whole school, you know, we have all the other health science schools, and we have the National Center for Interprofessional Health. Thanks to your efforts and the state, we're waiting on the Health Science Education Center, which is a game changer in terms of education. And, you know, I think we're really poised to be at the forefront for interprofessional team education, care, and research.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Regent Shu to provide the last contextual or prefatory question, and then I'm going to look for a motion and dialogue and discussion and hopeful approval of the resolution. Regent Shu?
Thank you, Chair McMillan. Thank you, presenters. This is truly a great day for healthcare in Minnesota. It's been a long time coming. I want to thank everyone who's worked on this. Some of the people who began working on this effort a few years ago are no longer around, but I think it took everybody to get to the point where we are now. After the last round, go-around, which ended around this time, July of 2016, I think everybody was a little depressed and that it didn't work out before, but I think we have a better deal now, commitment to move forward. And I have to say that And I have to say that when I first heard that Dr. Hereford was coming here, I quickly went onto YouTube, I think I might have told this story before, but I quickly went on YouTube and I found a presentation that he had given at a conference a few years ago. And after watching, it was a pretty long presentation, too, but it wasn't long into that presentation that I figured that, hey, this could be the ray of light that we need to move this thing forward, and I'm so glad that now we're finally here. I've got to pinch myself, actually, because I didn't think this day was coming. I know that, so thank you for coming here, Dr. Hereford. Also, some things, some moves that were made on our side that happened for various reasons, I think, has put us in this position. And while everyone's saying, "Hey, this isn't perfect," yeah, I understand it's not perfect, but I sense a commitment and a desire to work together to get to as close to perfection as we can in the near future, with the understanding that healthcare is changing every day and nobody really knows where we're going. Everyone's got an idea, thought, prediction, or whatever. But I think as long as we're committed to working together in the future, I think we can get there, and the people of Minnesota will benefit. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Regent Shu. Is there a...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Regent Johnson?
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to make a motion, and that is to move the adoption of the MHealth Fairview Letter of Intent for consideration this board.
Very good. Thank you. It's been, the resolutions on the screens before you and was part of your written materials. We've had a considerable amount of dialogue already, but I'd entertain any further comments or questions that anybody has about it. Regent Cohen?
I just wanted to say one more thank you, because I think this has been at the top of President Kayler's list for many, many years, and that he has been behind the scenes and urging that this be addressed and looked at and so on. And his appointment of Dr. Tolar certainly, from what we've heard, has been a really important appointment. So for all his efforts, which have been more behind the scenes, but steady and very important, I want to thank you, President Kayler.
Thank you, Regent Lucas. And I think Vice Chair Powell and I can both confirm and affirm the depth and extent of President Kayler's commitment here, as we've watched the priorities come to life this year, and this one certainly is coming to life. So I'll add my own thanks as board leader here, President Kayler. Other comments or questions before I call for a vote? Regent Anderson?
Thank you, Regent McMillan, Chairman McMillan. I just wasn't going to say anything, but I thought I should say, you know, and I come from rural Minnesota like Regent Johnson, people where I come from, I'll talk about what the University of Minnesota is and the difference it can make in the lives of the people. And when I got on this board three years ago, one of my goals was to make sure that we continue to have the University of Minnesota make a difference in the lives of everyday I am happy with the financial incentives and financial rewards of this proposed contract, but I don't want us to forget what we can do for the lives of everyday Minnesotans. Family physicians, Dr. Barrett, I have a lot of friends who are family physicians, and they are looking for places to send their patients in rural Minnesota. You talked about bone marrow transplants and difference it can make. I just happen to know that the University of Minnesota lost a great football player the other day, in Keith Fonghorst, 66 years old, and I heard about that, and I went to his obituary. I just want to say something that I saw in there. He said, in the obituary, his family said, "We want to give thanks to the University of Minnesota nephrology and transplant teams." And then it continues, it says, "Keith was able to witness his daughter's college graduations, a medical school graduation, walked two of his daughters down the aisle, and become beloved grandfather to his three cherished grandchildren because of the extra 15 years he got." So let's not forget, as we move forward, myself included, I'm very grateful for cardiovascular pediatric care at the University of Minnesota, which I'm glad to hear we're continuing, working real well. But let's not forget what this means to everyday people all over Minnesota. So thank you, guys, for your efforts.
Thank you. Regent Anderson? I'm going to, at this time, call for a vote on the Johnson motion to adopt the resolution related to MHealth Fairview Letter of Intent. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Very good. And I think we heard an aye from Regent Lucas as well via the phone. So with that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting of the Board of Regents with a heartfelt thank you to everyone that got us here. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Will? Got it off my list? Got a busy day? Oh, yes. I just got back from work. Good stuff. Did I? Very poor. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.